Be seated. We are about ready to have our first public hearing for the Palm Beach County budget. This is September 13th. It is after 5:05, so we are legally able to hold this hearing. I'm going to ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Commissioner Bernard?
Here.
Commissioner Kerner?
Here.
Commissioner Marino?
Here.
Commissioner McKinley?
Here.
Commissioner Sax?
Here.
Mayor Weinroth?
I am here.
Vice Mayor Weiss?
Here.
Thank you.
Commissioner Marino, would you please do the honors of the prayer and the Pledge of Allegiance? Everybody, please rise.
I'm happy to. And as this is a few days after 9/11, I think this one might be a good prayer. Gracious God, we thank you for the earth, our home, as we journey through our human life. Its miracles are too many to number and its fragility too easy to dismiss. Help us to honor and revere its wonders so that we protect and care for it as we would both a child, young and filled with possibility, and a beloved elder, graced with wisdom gained through experience. Open our eyes to behold its unseen blessings, unstop our ears to hear its pain, and fill our hearts with love for all that it so generously gives. We ask for this and your love. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you very much, Commissioner Marino. Okay, I'm going to ask for a motion to adopt the agenda. I have a motion by Vice Mayor. I have a second by Commissioner Kerner. All in favor, all opposed. Show that the motion to approve the agenda has been approved unanimously. I'm going to look for a motion to receive and file proof of publication. I have a motion by Commissioner Marino, seconded by the Vice Mayor. All in favor, all opposed. Proof of publication has been approved. Under TRIM, we're first required to read into the record the percentage increase in millage, over-rolled back rate, and specific purposes for ad valorem tax increases. Mrs. Baker, would you please take it up?
Thank you, Mayor. In accordance with Truth and Millage TRIM bill, the Board of Account and Commissioners shall hold hearings on the tentative budget and proposed millage rates. As stipulated in the TRIM bill, the first substantive issue to discuss shall be the percentage increase in the millage over the rollback rate necessary to fund the budget, if any, and the specific purpose for which ad valorem taxes are being increased. On page four, Palm Beach County, countywide proposed millage rate of 4.7150 is 11.22% over rollback rate. This requires a supermajority vote. Palm Beach County Library District proposed millage rate of 0.5491 is 12.27% over rollback rate. Palm Beach County Fire Rescue MSTU proposed millage rate of 3.4581 is 12.24% over rollback rate. This requires a supermajority vote. Palm Beach County Jupiter Fire MSTU proposed millage rate of 1.8713 is 17.32% over the rollback rate. Palm Beach County Aggregate proposed millage rate of 6.5088 is 10.09% over the rollback rate. Palm Beach County, countywide voted debt millage rate is 0.0289. Palm Beach County Library voted debt millage rate is 0.0290. On page five, increases over rollback revenue for fiscal year 2023, and the explanations for those increases or decreases are as follows. Countywide sheriff net tax increase is 38.8 million. I'm sorry, 38.3 million. Increase in other constitutional offices, including judicial, 5.4 million. Increase in BCC operations, net of revenues, 51.7 million. Increase in non-departmental operations, 14 million. Increase in reserves, 72.3 million. Increase in major revenues and gas taxes, 30 million. Increase in capital projects, 18 million. Decrease in debt service, 59,000. Decrease in other funding sources, 7.4 million. Increase in beginning balance brought forward, 35.2 million. Additional taxes from new construction at rollback rate, CRA rollback adjustment, and tax loss from revaluations by the Value Adjustment Board, 20.4 million for a total increase of $121,486,353. County Library, increase in library operations, net of revenues, 8 million. Increase in reserves, 2 million. Increase for transfer to library improvements slash expansion fund, 600,000. Increase in beginning balance brought forward, 1.4 million. Additional taxes from new construction at rollback rate and tax loss from revaluations by the Value Adjustment Board, 1.1 million for a total of 8,64695. Fire Rescue MSTU, increase in fire rescue operations, net of revenues, 32.1 million. Increase for transfer to capital projects fund, 10.5 million. Increase in reserves, 12.1 million. Increase in beginning balance brought forward, 10.1 million. Additional taxes from new construction at rollback rate, CRA rollback adjustment, and tax loss from revaluations by the Value Adjustment Board, 5.6 million for a total of 39,6950. Jupiter Fire Rescue MSTU, increase in fire rescue operations, net of revenues, 4.1 million. Additional taxes from new construction at rollback rate and tax loss from revaluations by the Value Adjustment Board, 180,000 for a total of 3,899,312. Page six and page seven contain the budget briefing and highlights that includes proposed transfers and amendments to fiscal year 2023 tentative budget. Page eight contains summary of proposed transfers and amendments. The transfers and amendments do not result in increased property taxes. The highlights for the 2023 budget briefing and highlights the countywide budget is balanced with a millage rate of 4.715 mils, which is the reduction after 11 consecutive years at 4.7815 mils. This requires a supermajority vote of the BCC. Other than the amendments included in this package, there are no other proposed changes. The total gross budget is 6.7 billion, of which 1.9 billion is the general fund. The budget includes 6% across-the-board pay adjustment and net increase of 96 new BCC positions. Fifteen of those are ad valorem, 81 are non-ad valorem funded. Compensation final phase was in for this fiscal year, 3.4 million. Ad valorem, new capital funding of 59 million primarily for renewal and replacement projects. Continued funding of 75,000 for the community ID program. Increase of 6.3 million over original estimate of tax collector due to North County Service Center project. An additional 18,000 for legal aid wage dispute contract for a total of 159,000.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Baker. All right, so our next order of business is to accept public comments on the total countywide funds budget, dependent district budgets, and the proposed budget amendments. Commissioner Kerner, do we have any comment cards?
We do, Mayor. We'll start public comment with Lisa Franklin, followed by Stacy Katz, and then Scott Lewis.
I want to ask you to take the place either on the left or on the right. You'll have three minutes. Please identify yourself for the record.
My name is Melissa Franklin, and I am with SEFRA, which is the Southeast Florida Recovery Advocates. Our mission and vision for SEFRA is to assemble a forum through which education, prevention, treatment, and recovery advocacy groups align, working towards common objectives surrounding all aspects of recovery and substance use. I'm here just to simply say thank you. There are not enough words to express the gratitude that we have for the Commission and Sheriff Rick Bradshaw for hearing our voices surrounding the allocation for the deputies to carry naloxone. Melissa, thank you for not just this, but the mountains you've helped us move over the years. Lives will be saved and families will be spared from destruction. A person saved by naloxone will be able to live and be able to seek recovery, in which the larger picture helps mitigate this addiction crisis we're experiencing in Florida and across our nation. We all have the common goal, and we must work together as a team. We are concerned that we have not heard back from PBSO regarding the timeframes of getting naloxone, training deputies, and deploying this tool in the streets. So we ask that PBSO, arming the deputies with naloxone on their tool belts, be placed at the top of their list for public health safety measures. We do know that naloxone is available for free at no charge to law enforcement through the Department of Health's HEROES program, and we do know that they have reached out to PBSO to let them know. We, as SEFRA and organizations alike, look forward to helping the Commission and PBSO in any capacity that anyone may need, and we look forward to hearing about your training and implementation dates as soon as possible.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. I just want to make note to the record that Maureen Killian, leader of the Southeast Florida Recovery Advocates, was basically saying exactly what you did, and we will receive and file her comments as well.
Very good. Thank you, Mayor. Now I have Stacy Katz, followed by Scott Lewis.
Thank you for recognizing me. I also wanted to express my greatest heartfelt thanks for all of the support that you have given us, Melissa. You know how we feel about you. And to the PBSO for finally hearing us and listening. We thank them very much, all of you, and I'm just thrilled to know that people on the streets will be saved. It was our mission for eight years, and here it is. It came to fruition. And basically, Melissa took all the points and said all of them. So it really is just a basic thank you. Thank you for allowing us to be here. And we're going to keep, you know, fighting for this, to have the streets safer, the police officers also feeling better and safer about themselves so that they can help. And the only question that I had, I guess, would be, it's a question of when we can expect for the actual Narcan naloxone to be given to the police officers so that they can use it. And if there is something that we can do as a community, there are a lot of nonprofits, a lot of places that are offering it for free, not only the naloxone, Narcan, but the training. So anything that we could do in the community to help the police, the Sheriff's Department, we will. And again, thank you very much, and thank you to PBSO.
Thank you for your comments.
Hi, my name's Scott Lewis at 514 14th Street. I am a native here. I was born in Good Sam. I'm here because the $200 million bond issue, which I believe is part of this budget that's coming up in November. I have, you know, I've supported these things in the past, but I have serious doubts because of the Post, Palm Beach Post, expose a couple weeks ago about the Ag Reserve. I voted for that. My family did, my parents, friends, because we never wanted to become like Broward and Dade. I believe we're much like Broward and Dade today. Traffic is horrible. And, you know, I need you all to be very careful with your $200 million bond issue in terms of convincing us that there won't be changes like happened to the Ag Reserve over the last 23 years that was documented by the Post, because that loses confidence in our political body that we depend on to represent us and fairly represent all of us. And I don't like it when the people who've been here forever are subsidizing all the new people that are coming in. And I want to be very careful with that. And I understand workforce housing. I've got 38 full-time employees, and I deal with that problem as an employer, small business employer in this county. But it's something that you need to balance, because we need to be able to trust you're going to make a decision and you're going to make payments that don't have something happening on the 12th floor like happened in the 2000s. And you all know what I'm talking about. We don't want that. I don't want it. People that have been here for a long time don't want where it's heading, and it looks worse and worse. You can't keep paving west of the county and concrete. We can't have it where you're environmentally sensitive, but you're getting rid of all the wetlands. And that's what's happening, and that really concerns me. I want to die here. I want to live here with my family. I want to enjoy this. I don't want it to be sold out, and I'm really concerned about that. So I appreciate you listening today, and thank you very much.
Thank you very much. I'd just like to make a clarification that the budget deliberations today have nothing to do with the $200 million bond. This body has already addressed that. That will be on the ballot in November. But thank you very much for your comments.
All right, Mayor. Now we'll have Michael Colta, Michael Colta, and Ashley Mendoza.
Hello. Thank you for hearing me. My name is Michael Colta. I guess you could say I'm a statistic. I recently moved here from California. And I'm here to express my concern about the increase in property taxes that I personally have seen, and I'm sure lots of people have seen. For me personally, according to the proposed property tax increase that I received in the mail, my property taxes will increase somewhere between 21 and 36%, which is a huge bump. I've already filed the formal petition. The hearing hasn't taken place yet. You know, I believe that the tax law that was in place to figure out what people should pay for taxes wasn't designed for the extreme increase in property values that we've all experienced over the last two years or so. So this increase in property taxes, combined with a separate issue of property, excuse me, property insurance being also a major concern for lots of people, has really impacted our cost of living. We have a single-income family of five, just moved here. So I'm looking to do anything I can to keep our living costs under control. So to that end, I would like to place my vote to keep the millage rate as low as possible and keep the budget as low as possible. Thank you for hearing me.
Thank you for your comments. Mr. Colta, I'm just going to point out to you, if you haven't done so already, you should apply for homestead on your home. That would keep the increase to no more than 3% a year. Commissioner Bernard?
Yes, and I did that as soon as I was allowed to do that. But for my personal situation, the property insurance that I paid last year was based on the previous owner's assessment, not my assessment. So that's where I'm at.
Right.
Yeah. Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Ashley Mendoza. I think that will be our last speaking card, and then we have two non-speaking.
Hi, my name's Ashley Mendoza. I am a resident of Palm Beach County for almost 15 years. I'm an ER nurse at Palmsworth Hospital, and I bought a home three years ago, and we got subjected to the same thing as him, because the ability to homestead is only for a certain period of time. And we bought our house in April, and it ends in March. So we kind of got what he got. But for the last three years, our property insurance has gone up. Even during 2020, the pandemic, the heroes, the nurses, ER nurses, still got property taxes increased when you had the option to lower it. You actually, again, have the option to keep it sustainable for us. We are a single-family income. My husband's a full-time college student. I'm also a part-time graduate student. We just had a young son. This directly affects the ability for us to kind of function. I know it's only a small amount. You think that it's negligible, but we got hit by a car. My car was undervalued because of the microchip shortage, so I had to buy another car. So now I have a car payment as well. So these little incremental increases in this budget and the taxes for me are a very large amount. It might seem small and insignificant to you, but as a person who lives here, it's very important. Gas is almost $4.50 a gallon, so every little bit that you take from me is significant. And I actually, during the pandemic, rode my bike from my house to work every day because I was trying to keep my lungs healthy, working with COVID patients. I can't tell you about the shrapnel that's on the roads, the garbage. I don't know what I'm paying for. I can tell you that I actually sent a letter to the mayor because none of the businesses downtown recycle. We're here about being economically friendly, like eco, green. Nobody recycles. I sent him a letter. He's like, well, we don't have the option to make them do it. Well, you do. If you really cared about the environment in this county, give them the bins, recycle the bottles. Otherwise, it's all going in the dump. And then what? We're going to have another dire park? We'll just have big mountains of garbage heaps. And I don't want my taxes going to that. So if you're going to do something with the taxes, maybe make it meaningful. Thank you.
Thank you so much, and we appreciate you being an ER nurse. Commissioner Bernard?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Madam Administrator, can you answer whether this board lowered the millage rate for the residents?
Yes, this board did lower the millage rate. We held our millage rate 4.7815 for 11 years, and the board did lower it to 4.71015. So the board did lower the millage rate.
But there's an option that exists for it to be...
Right. We can't hear you, and we really can't have a discussion on it. But I think, as the county administrator just pointed out, we did make a small decrease in the millage rate with respect to the recycling in the city. We don't have a lot of control over the cities, so, but we certainly hear you. And by the way, it doesn't go to the dump. We have a waste-to-energy facility, which is state-of-the-art, so your garbage turns into electricity.
Our last speaker is Erica Clancy.
Hey, good evening. I want to thank you guys all. I just wanted to come and express my concern for the proposed budget increase. Just to say, speak for myself, I've been a resident and lived in my property for 10 years. And unfortunately, due to circumstances, I haven't been able to homestead my house. And the difference between the budget and the proposed budget, you know, it makes a big difference to us. So just want you to consider that. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, Mayor. Our last two non-speaking cards are from Susan Foley. Narcan saves lives. PBSO saves lives. Free training, free Narcan will allow so many lives to be protected. And then Barbara Schaefer, please thank PBSO for agreeing to carry naloxone and to remind them the training is free and the product is free as well.
Very good. Thank you. Commissioner McKinley?
Yes, thank you. After eight years and finally learning, this is the time where we make our comments and ask questions before we go in and do all the millage rates. Ms. Baker, the original request that came from the sheriff's office included a request for $200,000, just to make sure that we have researched and covered that. Can you give an explanation where that stands?
Currently, the additional $200,000 is not in the budget after discussions with the sheriff as well as his staff. They wanted to look for other resources that would be free for the Narcan. And he did find, he's 199.9% certain he'd be able to receive the Narcan free. If at any time there is a need to allocate additional dollars for that, I am quite sure the sheriff will come and will bring it to the board, and we can always take it out of reserve contingency.
Okay. I'd also just like to thank Chief DiMario and Mr. Foreman for being here today, and to thank you for a very healthy conversation at our last meeting and for taking that message back to the sheriff and for working together to find a conclusion. I heard you loud and clear. This is not the end-all-be-all. This won't solve the problems that the community faces in terms of the addiction and the overdose crisis, but it's certainly a tool worthwhile to have in the toolbox if it's needed. And I appreciate you working with us. And to the community advocates there, for all of the years of your advocacy, we appreciate everything that you did to help make this happen and continue to pray for those families that are suffering in our community. And just a couple of comments. A few of the speakers, Mr. Mayor, brought up the issue of property insurance. We certainly were all facing that. I would encourage you to make sure that you are paying close attention to who's on the ballot for your state senate and your state House of Representatives seats and their positions on the property insurance crisis. That is where those decisions are made, and make sure that your feelings regarding property insurance are expressed to those elected leaders. We, as individuals, certainly let them know how we feel on that issue. And also, a lot of the different categories on that TRIM notice that you received are not categories that are under the county commission jurisdiction. For instance, you got the FWC, the Inland Navigation District, the South Florida Water Management District, the school boards, municipalities. All of those are budgets, and those millage rates are decided by those entities. So, Mr. Mayor, I want to thank you for bringing forward a proposal to lower the millage rate this year. I look forward to supporting your request.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Kerner, you're up.
Thank you, Mayor. And I also want to join Commissioner McKinley in thanking you for your leadership in bringing forward the reduced ad valorem millage rate proposal to the board, and I'm proud to support the budget today. The only question that I had as a follow-up to Commissioner McKinley, Madam Administrator, is a lot of the folks that testified today referenced that Narcan can be obtained free by the sheriff's office, and so as a result, the $200,000 is not in the budget. I know we can access it later. But from an operational standpoint, from an implementation standpoint, is there any concern that going through the route where it's obtained without cost can take longer to implement versus purchasing it directly?
I am not aware that that's the case. I know that our health department has access to it along with others, and I don't believe that is going to be the case.
Okay.
If it is an issue, I have no doubt that the sheriff will contact me or his staff.
Very good. And I just want to make clear that, and I think the board would join me in this perspective, we don't want to stand in the way of implementing it any slower than it, or any quicker than it should be. So thank you for that. And that concludes public comment and my comments.
Very good. Okay. And I echo my colleagues. We certainly are very appreciative of the sheriff's decision to give the deputies the Narcan, and anything we can do to facilitate that, we certainly will do. Okay, we're going to return, oh, sorry, Commissioner Marino. You popped up real quickly here.
That's all right. And is this the point in time where we're allowed to comment?
Of course. I was just going to say we're going to have board discussion on the budget.
Thank you. I appreciate everything the administration has done. I do have a question, though. On page six of our budget, when you were highlighting some of the things that are being included, you included here continued funding of $75,000 for the community ID program. I believe at our October 19, 2021 meeting, we budgeted it as a one-time grant last year. This was not supposed to be a carryover. And we also asked that there be semi-annual reports due every six months detailing the program performance. I don't believe we've ever received those. And I don't know how it now appears on our budget, since this was a one-time funded project. And we just gave legal aid this morning, 1.1 million. So, any comments?
The $75,000 was included in the budget at the July meeting. I did have it in there. It was questioned whether it was in there by the board, and I said yes. And there was no direction to take it out, so I did not take it out.
And I believe I was actually at Mayo Clinic for that meeting, so I did not hear it.
I did a little research after...
Okay, thank you.
And as this board knows, I was not really in favor of that expenditure, but I was outvoted, and I'm not going to raise any red flags about it this time. I would like to see, like Commissioner Marino, a report on what was done with the $75,000 from last iteration. All right, not seeing any more discussion... All right, not seeing any more discussion. Vice Mayor, you are recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to approve certain budget transfers and amendments for those countywide funds as more specifically set forth on pages nine through 15 of the September 13, 2022 public hearing budget document. Such transfers and amendments totaling $52,613,679.
I have a motion by the Vice Mayor. Do I have a second? I have a second by Commissioner McKinley. I'm sorry. Seeing no further discussion, all in favor, all opposed, show that's approved, seven to zero. Vice Mayor?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt Palm Beach County countywide tentative millage of 4.7150, which is 11.22% over the rollback rate of 4.2392, and the countywide voted debt millage rate of 0.0289.
I have a motion by the Vice Mayor. Do I have a second? I have a second by Commissioner Kerner. Seeing no further discussion, all in favor, all opposed, show that is being approved, seven to zero. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to adopt Palm Beach County countywide tentative budget of
I have a motion by the Vice Mayor. Do I have a second? I have a second by Commissioner Sacks. All in favor, all opposed, show that has been approved, seven to zero. Thank you, Vice Mayor. We're going to return to the board for discussion on the Library District. Commissioner Sacks, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to adopt Palm Beach County Library District tentative millage of 0.5491, which is 12.27% over the rollback rate of 0.4891, and the Palm Beach County Library District voted debt millage rate of 0.0290.
I have a motion by Commissioner Sacks. Do I have a second? I have a second by the Vice Mayor. Seeing no further discussion, all in favor, all opposed, show that's been approved, seven to zero. Commissioner Sacks?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion at this time to adopt Palm Beach County Library District tentative budgets of 169,890...
That's a million, yes.
That's a lot of books.
That's a lot of books.
A lot of books.
Why don't you repeat it?
I will. I'm going to repeat it from the beginning. Motion to adopt Palm Beach County Library District tentative budgets of 169,890,693.
Very good. I have a, Commissioner Sacks has made a motion. Do I have a second? I have a second by the Vice Mayor. Seeing no further discussion, all in favor, all opposed, show that is being approved, seven to zero. We're now going to return to the board for discussion on the Municipal Service Taxing District. Commissioner McKinley, you are recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to adopt the Palm Beach County Municipal Service Taxing District tentative budget of $58,039,806.
I have Commissioner McKinley's motion. Do I have a second? I have a second by Commissioner Marino. Seeing no further discussion, all in favor, all opposed, show that is being approved, seven to zero. Thank you, Commissioner McKinley. We're going to return to the board now for discussions on the Fire Rescue MSTU. Commissioner Bernard, you're recognized.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to adopt Palm Beach County Fire Rescue MSTU tentative millage of 3.4581, which is 12.24% over the rollback rate of 3.0811.
Very good, thank you, Commissioner Bernard. I have a motion. Do I have a second? I have a second by Commissioner Marino. Seeing no further discussion, all in favor, all opposed, show that is being approved, seven to zero. Commissioner Bernard, you're recognized.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to adopt Palm Beach County Fire Rescue MSTU tentative budgets of $698,555,539.
I have a motion by Commissioner Bernard. I have a second by the Vice Mayor. Seeing no further discussion, all in favor, all opposed, show that is being approved, seven to zero. We're now going to return to the board for discussion of the Jupiter Fire MSTU. Commissioner Marino, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to adopt Palm Beach County Jupiter Fire MSTU tentative millage of 1.8713, which is 17.32% over the rollback rate of 1.5951.
Thank you, Commissioner Marino. I have a motion. Do I have a second? I have a second by Commissioner Sacks. All in favor, all opposed, show that's being approved, seven to zero. Commissioner Marino, you're recognized.
Thank you. I have a motion, may I have a motion to adopt Palm Beach County Jupiter Fire MSTU tentative budget of $26,191,77.
Thank you, Commissioner Marino. I have a motion. I'm looking for a second. I have a second by Commissioner McKinley. No further discussion, all in favor, all opposed, show that's being approved, seven to zero. We're now going to return to the board for discussion of the MSTU Unincorporated Improvement Fund. Commissioner McKinley, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll make a motion to adopt Palm Beach County MSTU Unincorporated Improvement Fund budget of $14,283,678.
Thank you, Commissioner McKinley. We have a motion. Do I have a second? I have a second by Commissioner Kerner. Seeing no further discussion, all in favor, all opposed, show that is being approved, seven to zero. Okay, we're now going to make the adoption of the tentative aggregate millage rate. Commissioner Kerner, would you please make a motion?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd make a motion to adopt Palm Beach County tentative aggregate millage of 6.5088, which is 10.09% over the rollback rate of 5.9121.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Kerner. I have a second by Commissioner Marino. Seeing no further discussion, all in favor, all opposed, we have approved it, seven to zero.
I have a motion to adjourn.
We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.